Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session of December 6th. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mumm.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, Mr. Ormsby is out of the office today, and Mr. Johnny Perkins will be leading the advanced briefing. Mr. Perkins, take it away.
Thank you, Council President. We're going to start today with some of our consent agenda items. First up is Rick Giddings as it relates to the purchase of five new compressed natural gas Scorpions automated side loaders. Mr. Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President, council members. Solid Waste Collection Department would like to purchase five new CNG Scorpion automatic side loader refuse trucks using Sourcewell Contract 060920-CRN for a total of $2,583,000, I'm sorry, $2,552,000 including tax from Dobbs Truck Group, Federal Way, Washington. These are going to replace some units that have reached the end of their economic life. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Up next, item two is a brief discussion from Corinne Morris as it relates to an inter-local government amendment extension with the Spokane County Treasurers Office. Corinne?
Thank you very much. In 2018, utility billing the city of Spokane, we partnered with Spokane County Treasurers Office to process all of our payments that come in the form of paper, so checks, money orders, and cashier's checks. And this was to replace a very large, outdated equipment that we had in utility billing at the time. That inter-local agreement that we entered into expires December 31st of this year, and we're looking to extend another three years, as well as the county has negotiated a lower price for us per check to 20 cents per check versus 22 cents per check. Total cost $65,000 for the year based on check volume. Any questions? Thank you.
Oh, quickly?
Uh huh, sure.
So, over the three years, we'll be looking at a cost adjustment, or is this a fixed amount over the three-year period?
They charge us based on the number of checks received. So what we found due to the pandemic, we have a much lower volume of checks. And so $65,000 is an annual cost, but they base it on the number of checks they actually process.
Right, and I'm saying, right now you say it's 22 cents, so I'm just saying, will that be over this three-year contract, that same amount regardless of the volume?
Yes, it will be 20 cents per item for the three-year duration.
All right, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Morris, appreciate that. Item number three is a contract renewal with SNAP as it relates to delivering of some home repairs through our essential repair program, and Mr. George Dahl is going to provide a brief overview. George?
Yeah, good afternoon, council. So these two programs are funded through the Community Development Block Grant Program that's administered through the Community Housing and Human Services Department. So we're looking to enter into contract with SNAP for these programs for calendar year 2022. They will provide approximately 260 single-family essential repairs and then 30 single-family significant rehab loans.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dahl.
Thanks.
Item four is to discussion briefly about accepting a grant awards from the Washington State Criminal Justice Training Commission, and Ms. Jackie McConnell is going to be presenting this. Jackie?
Hi, good afternoon, council. There was a really quick timeframe on this. We were actually able to submit and receive a grant from the Criminal Justice Training Commission. It's actually for a pretty short timeframe. It will go from December 1st to, I believe, June 30th, 2022, and it's for $60,000. So we're, we're pretty excited. We have almost doubled our number of applicants from 2019 to 2021, so we're excited to see what we can do with this money.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell, appreciate that. Item five is a contract with Cascade Industrial Services for the removal of graffiti from the Monroe Street Bridge, and Mr. Clint Harris is going to present that. Mr. Harris?
Good afternoon, council president and council. The street department is seeking approval for a contract with Cascade Industrial Services in the amount of $107,637.50 to provide removal of graffiti from the Monroe Street Bridge, as well as application of a coating to help facilitate future maintenance on that bridge to remove the graffiti.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Harris. Item six, acceptance of grant funding from the Department of Justice through the Washington State Department of Commerce for police equipment, and Major Mike McNabb is going to present. Major?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council president, city council. Back in September, I briefed you that I was going to be applying for a Department of Commerce grant to receive less-than-lethal equipment, and I received that grant. We were awarded $50,762 to purchase less-than-lethal equipment during the time period of November 15th of this year through June 30th of 2022. This proposal includes 30 FN tactical less-than-lethal launchers, ammunition, and funding for two instructor courses.
Thank you, Major McNabb, appreciate that. Item seven, contract amendment for the Washington State Department of Transportation, going to be presented by Kevin Pacano. Mr. Pacano?
Thank you, good afternoon. This item is a contract amendment for our existing master agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the North Spokane Corridor freeway construction work, and it pertains to our city utility relocations. This contract amendment will increase the maximum contract amount from $15 million to $33.2 million. Any questions?
Thank you, Kevin. Item eight is a recommendation to list Philip and Agnes Brooks' house on the Spokane Registry of Historic Places, and Ms. Megan DuPaul is going to present that. Ms. DuPaul?
Good afternoon, council. I will quickly share my screen here. And, okay, so you're all familiar with the Spokane Registry of Historic Places. It's our local program. It is voluntary. We require the consent of the owner for listing on the Spokane Register. This is how we protect our historic resources through the management agreement that you're reviewing. Design review is only when building permit is sought, and it's the way that we offer incentives to property owners. And I did throw in a slide at the end just to kind of tell you what we did in 2021. So in order to be eligible, the age of a property generally needs to be 50 years or older, and they have to meet one of the criteria in our municipal code. We can list building sites, district structures, and objects. Categories are Category A of an association with broad patterns of Spokane's history. Category B is an association with significant people to Spokane. Category C is architecture. Category D deals with archaeology or prehistory. And Category E is our cultural heritage. And so let me go to the Brook House that I have for you. Built in 1921, the architecturally significant Brook House at 519 West 18th Avenue is a well-preserved bungalow designed in the French colonial style. The house is located on the south side of 18th Avenue, just west of Cattaldo Catholic School. Let me go back there so you can see where it was. The Brook House is eligible for the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Category C as a property that embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type and period of construction. The one-story house is a fine example of the bungalow form that's embellished with stylistic influences from 18th and 19th century vernacular French colonial cottages. These influences include a low-pitched pavilion and/or pyramid-shaped roof, and widely overhanging eaves, a symmetrical facade design, a modest overall size and scale, multi-painted casement windows, a full-width front porch terrace, and a center arch pediment with scroll saw and brackets over the front door. On the interior, the living room is distinguished with a colonial-influenced fireplace, flanked by original built-in bookcases capped with original multi-painted casement windows. Interior woodwork, all painted white, includes floor and crown molding, window frames, and doors. Picture rail molding accentuates the living room, dining room, and master bedroom. A built-in linen closet located in the center hall. Interior doors throughout the house are original with two inset panels each and original crystal doorknobs. The Brook House was designed by the firm of Wescott and Gifford Architects, which was in practice from 1921 to 1924. Fred Wescott's career, especially when he was a partner with WW Hislop, was prolific. He and Hislop were responsible for the designs of many commercial buildings and hundreds of homes that were built throughout Spokane. Hislop and Wescott also produced a professional magazine called The Inland Empire Architects from 1911 through 1912. The architectural periodical featured homes and commercial buildings designed by Hislop and Wescott individually, as well as by the architectural firm, and contained articles on architectural styles and trends, construction materials and practices, and advertisements for local construction trade suppliers. The Brook House retains excellent integrity in original location, design, materials, workmanship, and association. The property was reviewed at the November 17th Landmarks Commission meeting and was recommended eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under Category C. And if you'll just indulge me for one minute, I just, I always like to talk a little bit about the economic impact of historic preservation, and so I just wanted to share with council the 12 projects that total over $26 million in rehabilitation dollars that happened just in 2021. So I just wanted to give you a quick picture and general dollar amount of each of these projects. They range from commercial, two of the buildings were office buildings that have been converted to housing, which I think is a trend that we're going to see more of in preservation, and then also just some residential units and also commercial. So anyway, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. DuPaul, appreciate that. Item nine, inter-local agreement with the Spokane Regional Emergency Incursions, also known as SREC or CAD, and IT services, and I'd like to turn it over to Chief Fire Chief Jay Atwood. Chief?
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. As I briefed the public safety, this is an inter-local agreement, which gives us the vehicle to be able to bill SREC for IT-related services tied to the computer-aided dispatch service system, and IT support for all of those systems as well. The current ILA will get us a, will result in some revenue, $258,838.07, and that is revenue tied to services billed back to July or June of 2020, and gets us all the way through into the next year for 2022, and then it also sets us up to be able to bill annually thereafter.
Thank you, chief. Item ten has, I'm sorry, item, item 10 has two subsections. It relates to amendments with outside counsel, the Summit Law Group pertaining to vaccine mandates, and the city attorney's office. Mr. Mike Piccolo is going to walk us through these items. Mr. Piccolo?
Good afternoon, council. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. So these are two contract amendments, both to special counsel summit law group. Both actions are in federal district court of Eastern Washington. And again, both of them deal with the issue of state, state vaccine mandate requirements. So the first one is Wise versus State of Washington and Governor Inslee, where we were added as a defendant. And the second one is Bacon versus City of Spokane standalone case. So the first one increases the dollar amount from $50,000 with an additional $75,000 for a total of $125. Then the second one increases the amount from $50,000 for an additional $50,000 for $100,000. Both of these have been through the initial arguments for temporary restraining orders, preliminary injunctions, efforts to get summary judgment, and all of those have failed. So these dollar amounts will get us through that initial stage and get us set up for any subsequent litigation action.
Mike, how, how much total then is being spent in terms of litigation related to vaccine mandates?
Well, in these two cases, it'll be the $125 plus $100,000. I'm not sure.
$225?
Right. And that's, that's the amounts that have been set aside for all the litigation. I don't know the exact amount of how much has actually been spent so far. It'll be a smaller amount, obviously.
I, I just, not your issue, but I have to imagine that we could better spend that money bringing those firefighters back into their jobs, but I'll leave it at that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Items 11 and 12 are placeholder items regarding a report of the mayor on pending claims, and item 12 is a placeholder item as it relates to city council meeting minutes. The next item is boards and commission appointments, and there are a number of reappointments to various commissions that will be considered. And then taking us to emergency ordinances, there are three initially. One for making the parking services division its standalone department. Second is amending the duties and functions of the Community and Economic Development Services Department, and three is establishing a new office of civil rights, equity, and inclusion, and Council President Beggs is going to brief us on those three items. Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Yeah, so each year on the night that we approve the budget, we also take up any ordinances that change the organizational structure or governance. And so we have these three plus an additional one. These ones are filed as emergency ordinances to go into effect immediately. The fourth one we'll get to later wouldn't go into effect until May. Parking services is simply about a year and a half ago, the administration asked us to try out an experiment of putting code enforcement, developer services, and parking enforcement all into one department. And some of us thought that was too much at the time, and so this comes out of the Budget Committee work group to recommend that we leave developer services and code enforcement the same, but put parking standalone so that we can get more focus on that. And just to be clear, this is not a critique of anyone working there. Everyone's doing a great job, but just thought that all the things that are going on in all three of those departments could use more focus and additional help. The Division for Community and Economic Development Services is just some language that makes it clear that we're really focusing on growing homegrown businesses and improving them. That's where most your jobs come from, is from existing businesses. And also, we worked with the administration on language to emphasize the importance of family wage jobs on that. And then the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion, something we've been talking about for a while, and this would just elevate it from one project employee coordinator to its full department. And we have corresponding financing for that in the proposed budget ordinance on that. I'll go back to you, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. The next emergency ordinance is to set a hearing before council for the vacation of Perry Street, and Mr. Eldon Brown is going to present that. Mr. Brown?
Good afternoon, council. I'll see if I can pull this item up here on the screen for us. Okay, this street vacation deals with Perry Street north of Hartson, between Hartson and Celesta. Basically, we have an apartment complex on the east side over there that owns properties on both sides of Perry, and they basically want to build across that right-of-way. We do not have any utilities or anything in that actual right-of-way, so it looks like it's a good candidate for vacation. The applicant will be required to kind of provide some closure work there if the vacation's successful on the north side of Hartson, right at the entrance to Perry. We did have just a couple items on there to address. There's a catch basin in the corner in here that if vacated, needs to be probably relocated just outside the right-of-way, just what stays within the, the public right-of-way and handles city drainage. The actual amount of the vacation for the right-of-way is estimated to be $62,418.97, so that would be part of the final vacation. The applicant would need to pay that as valued in the city. Other than that, we do not have any city utilities in that right-of-way, and so that extends down to Celesta. So it looks like it's a good candidate to be vacated. Be happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next emergency ordinance is approving settlement agreement and release of all claims with Scott Garsky and Rebecca, Rebecca Garsky, and Mr. Sam Pagoni from the city attorney's office is going to present this information. Mr. Pagoni?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council president, council members. This resolution is for approval of a settlement agreement with the plaintiffs in the amount of $87,500 over an incident that occurred in April 2020. It was a trip and fall over a sidewalk. If, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Thank you.
Mr. Pacano, thank you, appreciate that. A quick overview, sir, thank you. The next item is following final reading ordinance is pending suspension of the council rules to add as a first reading on the December 6th agenda, streamlining of the organization of the Spokane Police Department, and Council President Beggs is going to provide a brief overview.
Yeah, so both this ordinance and the additional ordinance on making drug possession a misdemeanor crime in Spokane would need to get a motion to suspend the rules to put it on first reading for tonight, the sixth, and final reading on the 13th. This particular one on the Spokane Police Department, as I mentioned earlier, is part of the four ordinances that we're doing at the budget night. It is not filed as an emergency ordinance, which is why it needs a suspension of the rules to be heard. And it would roll back something that was done a few years ago. You know, most, under city law, each department can only have two exempt positions, and a few years ago, before, I think just about everyone who's on council is on council, they took the fire department and the police department and divided them up into sub-departments so that they each had 10 exempt positions. The fire department got taken to court and found they couldn't do that, and so they repealed that ordinance and went back to one department and two exempts. The police department didn't go to court on it, and this has, most of those positions, or quite a few of them, are simply vacant. So this would just return it to the, like every other department, there would be two exempts, and the intent was anyone in these exempt positions would keep their positions, and we've made that clear all along. We've talked to civil service, we've talked to the unions. Doesn't seem to be an issue with that. But Councilmember Kinnear, out of an abundance of caution, requested that we put language to just make that crystal, crystal clear, so no one would think that the people in the existing positions would be in any danger of losing their positions. And so we did circulate language earlier today to all of council, and just recirculated that a few minutes ago, that would make that clear, that no one's losing their job or position over this, and they can continue on it as long as they're in that position, and then whoever replaces them would be not exempt anymore. So there's a couple of things. So one, Councilmember Kinnear, if you want to make a motion to substitute the version that was circulated.
So moved.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion about the substitution? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then secondly, is there a motion to suspend the rules for today's meeting to adjust the agenda in both this meeting, and there will be also several adjustments proposed in the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Just suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Burke moved, Councilmember Mumm seconded. Any discussion about suspending the rules? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Nay.
Okay, so I see a six to one. The rules are suspended for purposes of adjusting the agendas at, for the December 13th and December 6th meetings. Then, Councilmember Kinnear, is there a motion to put ordinance 36156, a first reading for December 6th and final reading for December 13th?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, that's six to one. It is added for first reading on the 6th and second and final reading on the 13th. And before I turn it over to you, again, Mr. Perkins, I'll, I'll look for a similar motion on ordinance C36160, adding it as first reading on the 6th and final reading on the 13th. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Burke. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay. Six to one again, so that's added to the 6th and the 13th. And I'll turn it back.
Council President?
Yes?
One more time, could you?
One more time, could you reiterate the nexus between what we're doing with the budget at the end of the year and how we adjust departments also concurrently? Because I think that piece is being missed by a lot of the public, maybe some of our staff and council members.
So, yes, so because organizational changes often impact the budget, we do typically, the night that we pass the budget, which is scheduled for December 13th, we take up any ordinances that would change the organizational structure. There are occasions that it happens outside the last meeting, but that's typically what we've done, and certainly the five years that I've been on council, we've done that. So that's why these ordinances are coming up for a vote next week. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Perkins, to invite Ms. Muramatsu to talk about C36160.
Thank you, Council President. This item is relating to crimes involving drug possession and enacting new sections of the municipal code, and I briefly walk us through that from the City Attorney's Office. Is Ms. Muramatsu, Ms. Muramatsu?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Perkins and members of council. This proposed ordinance simply incorporates into the municipal code Washington's newly-revised drug possession offenses. You may all remember that the State v. Blake case struck down the drug possession statute. There was a defect in that statute related to the mental state, and so the legislature took quick action and adopted changes to that statute, which now made it legal. But in the process, they changed the penalty. Now we have misdemeanor offenses rather than classic felony offenses. They also created a process whereby people would be referred to treatment on their first and second contacts by law enforcement, allowing them to have an opportunity at addressing their drug problems prior to being prosecuted. One of the things that I think is really positive about this proposed ordinance is that we anticipate, it's not in the language of the ordinance, I realize, that we anticipate working with the municipal court's criminal justice services, formerly known as probation. And once officers create that referral, probation would then take it from there and connect people with services. So that'll be a really positive outcome of this particular ordinance. Right now, we need this to enforce that particular law into municipal court, but it is a misdemeanor, and there will be a treatment component. And if anyone has any questions, I think Howard Delaney is also here from municipal court. He can also answer questions.
All right. Ms. Muramatsu, thank you very much for that briefing. Appreciate that. Council President, the last item I have is adoption of the annual budget for the city for fiscal year 2022. And Paul and Josie from the Chief Financial Officer's office is here.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council President and council members. As you just heard, this is the ordinance to adopt the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, and is found on PDF page 183 of your packet. Happy to take any questions.
And I'll just, for public awareness, city council has looked at that and made several recommendations for some adjustments, which we'll take up on budget night. And we've been meeting weekly with members of the administration to talk about what those are. So there'll be some other things that'll come into that, so for those of you who are wondering. But there is opportunity at tonight's meeting and on the 13th for continued public comment on it.
And Council President, I believe that includes the advanced agenda for Monday, December 13th.
All right, well, great job. Welcome to that task. And I think my gorm should be getting back before the next one, maybe. But anyway, it's great to have you here. And I will look for a motion to approve the advanced agenda as modified.
Submoved. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Burke moved. Councilmember Mum seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, advanced agenda is approved for next week. And then that brings us to this evening's meeting. And before we get to the consent agenda, I had a host of potential changes that people have brought forward. The first one is, well, yeah, the first one is the special budget ordinance that's listed right now for increasing the fire department fund by $5 million by taking the money from the contingency reserve account. And there is a substitute ordinance that's been circulated that lowers that amount to approximately $3.5 million and takes the money from ARPA reserves and public safety levy reserves. And so is there, and that came about from council budgetary staff and administration budgetary staff working together to figure out that we didn't need the full $5 million. Is there a motion to substitute the version that was circulated today?
Submoved. Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion about the substitution? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yes, so two questions. One is on the public safety levy dollars. Are those, were those earmarked for anything else that we're taking away from? And then does this also mean that there's no more consideration of using any pension dollars?
Yeah, I think, I'll try to answer, and if I get it wrong, Mr. Boston, you can come in. So the, those monies were in reserves in the public safety levy, so they're not taking away from anything else. They're reserved there. And then the pension fund, the pension board isn't going to meet until the 15th to talk about it. And council could just approve that money without them, but we're trying to show them some comedy and keep them involved. But what we're imagining is that the same overtime problem is going to fall into 2022 so that we will ask them, essentially ask them, we still would like to use that money, but we'll do it in 2022, or for some other fire purpose, like fire trucks, because we were going to use potentially some of that ARPA money for fire trucks. So the fire pension money is on the table, but not for 2021.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Mum.
Yes, I support this, and want to thank Matt Boston and everyone else who worked on this, to look at other options under the couch cushions, as they say, for this money. I think we really pulled a rabbit out of the hat here. And I'm so thankful, and I hope the rest of the council will vote for this, that we are not dipping into contingency fund. That's an absolute last resort in my book, and I hope that continues in the future. We can always work together to find creative ways to finance some of these problems before we hit that last stopgap. So thank you.
All those in favor of substituting this version of the ordinance indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that looks like unanimous for substituting. And then closely related, there is an ordinance C36162 that was circulated that would repurpose the balance of the $500,000 we approved from ARPA funds for the fire department for vaccine clinics, and they've only used a fraction of that amount of money. So that was circulated, and using that allows us to spend less money than the amount that we just approved, not approved, but we just substituted. Is there a?
Submoved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about adding ordinance 36162 as a special budget ordinance this evening? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that is now on the agenda as a special budget ordinance for this evening. That brings us to emergency ordinances. And there is an emergency ordinance updating the apprenticeship program utilization. And we circulated another update. We've amended this, this ordinance was proposed back in June. We've amended it several times to take into account feedback from the contractor community. And then recently, they brought up another point, that general contractors might be held liable for penalties for subcontractors when they didn't have that much control over it in terms of the per craft requirement of utilization. And so we added that language today and circulated that to take some pressure off the general contractors, but still hold the spirit of the law. And is there a motion to substitute that version?
Submoved, substitute.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of substituting that ordinance indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's substituted. All right, then resolutions, on Resolution 99 is our legislative agenda. And again, we circulated a substitute of Attachment A, which is the actual agenda to the resolution, based on feedback that we've gotten since we filed it, both from council members and from members in the community. Just to, really, it's all about clarity. It's not about too much of substance, but circulated that earlier today. And is there a motion to substitute Exhibit A for this resolution?
Submoved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Mum, I heard first. All right, any discussion about the substitution? Councilmember Kinnear?
Could you please tell the public, there were two pieces that were contentious. One was regarding the funding for what would be additional felony, I'm having a hard time here, felony crimes that would be funded with dollars. And then the other piece was the intake center. We did take the piece off that said downtown so that we would have more ability to choose, and we wouldn't be necessarily pigeonholed to putting down an intake, putting up intakes that are downtown. So could you just?
Sure.
Briefly rub it up?
Yeah, so there were a few changes in the language. One was on the Smart Justice ARCs program, just to make it clear that it's a pilot program. It is not, it's not a diversion of people in the court system. They basically actually plead guilty to their crime, and it's a funding mechanism from the state to fund drug court and other therapeutic courts. Right now, we have to depend a lot on local money for that. So that was on that. So it's not, it's not a, it's not changing the sentences for felony crimes. Some people kind of assumed that. It wasn't really in the language, but they had some concern about that. And then you mentioned the intake service center for homeless services. And the idea on that, again, is to get people out from under the viaducts, consistent with Boise v. Martin, and having a place where people could go, and then be referred out to services and shelter outside the downtown core. And we just made it clear that this intake center, there's not a location for it. It doesn't have to be downtown. It could be wherever. And this is just asking the legislature for money for funding for a building to help us do that. And then there was a third change in there, not, I don't know if it was controversial, but we're looking for money for a municipal court diversion bed facility at the request of the municipal court, where they could have people get into housing and go into treatment if they're accused of crimes in the municipal court system. So we just tweaked the language on that a little bit as well. So that's a summary of those changes. I don't really think any of them were substantive, but they, again, the feedback we got, that people were confused or mistaken about the meaning of it, so we just tried to add clarity to the language. Any other comments? All right, so the motion is to substitute the new language in Exhibit A to the Resolution 99. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? All right, any abstentions? Okay, that is substituted. And I think that's all the changes on the agenda. Ms. Fister, if you'd like to read the consent agenda.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, low bid of Cameron Riley LLC Spokane Valley, Washington for the 2022 street maintenance ADA ramps, $690,270, and administrative reserve of $69,027, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside, various councils. Number two, value blanket renewals for the waste energy facility with A, North Star Chemical, Tacoma, Washington for the purchase of sodium hydroxide, 50% membrane caustic soda from February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2023, not to exceed $100,000 plus tax. Second of two, one-year renewal options. B, Atlas Copco Arlington, Washington for an as needed compressor rentals during maintenance outages from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $135,000, including tax. Second of four, one-year renewal options. Number three, value blanket amendment with LJ Oil Company Incorporated for the purchase of Ultra Lowso for number two, diodesal and supporting equipment from October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2022, not to exceed $60,000 plus tax. Number four, revenue contract renewal amendment two of four with American Recycling Corporation, Spokane Valley, Washington for the sale of the waste energy facilities, metals, ash and scrap metals, from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, anticipated revenue approximately $300,000. Number five, contract renewal two of four with Big Sky Industrial Spokane, Washington for vacuum support services at the waste energy facility from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $150,000, including tax. Number six, two-year contract renewal with Helfrich Brothers Boiler Works Incorporated, Lawrence, Massachusetts for refractory installation, sandblasting services at the waste energy facility from February 1, 2022 through January 31, 2024, not to exceed $1,900,000, including tax. Number seven, contract with HydroTech Generator Repair Plus Incorporated Doing Businesses Hydraulics Plus Spokane Valley, Washington for the offsite rebuild of hydraulic and pneumatic cylinders from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, not to exceed $100,000, including tax. Number eight, master contract amendment and renewal, one of two with Camtech Incorporated, Spokane, Washington for camera video management software and access control systems installation and maintenance from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, $350,000. Number nine, revised agreement with Downtown Spokane Partnerships, Spokane, Washington for management of the Downtown Parking and Business Improvement District, $500,000 relates to final reading ordinance C36151, which will be considered during the 6:00 PM legislative session. Number 10, contract amendment extension number four with the Martin Luther King Junior Family Outreach Center for the operation of the Martin Luther King Community Center from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2024. Year 2022, $292,500. Year 2023, $264,150. And funding for 2024 shall be decreased by 10% from the 2023 funding amount. Number 11, five-year master services agreement renewal with US Bank, Spokane, Washington for city banking services from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2026, $1 million. Number 12, contract with RoKart Media Spokane, Washington for stormwater stewardship media services from October 16, 2021 through October 15, 2023, not to exceed $75,000 annually, including tax. Number 13, contract renewal with RoKart Media Spokane, Washington for water stewardship media services from October 16, 2021 through October 15, 2023, not to exceed $100,000 annually, including tax. Number 14, consultant agreement with Makers Architecture and Urban Design Seattle, Washington to assist in the Center and Corridor Development Code and Design Standard update from December 15, 2021 through December 31, 2023, $125,000. Number 15, reported the mayor of Pennington, claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through November 24, 2021, total $4,834,063.38 with Parks and Library claims approved of the affected boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $3,283,598.14. B, payroll claims of previously approved obligations through November 27, 2021, $8,172,514.12. Number 16, city council meeting minutes for November 22, 2021.
Wow, thank you, Terry, for all that. You always do that so well. All those in favor? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda?
President?
Oh, sorry.
Under number 10, is there a requirement that we're funding, the community centers that we fund, do they make yearly reports to us?
They, they do. This last year, they've been making informal reports to the administration, but we have arranged, they're working with Hanley, to come make a presentation to council, so that's
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as read, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda for December 6 is adopted, and we are now getting ready for an executive session. And who from City Legal is leading that? Okay.
I will be joining, and HR will be there as well.
All right. Can you tell us the purpose and give us an estimated time?
Check and see if Megan is on, on with us. It's going to be to discuss labor negotiations. And I'm thinking probably, knowing how long these can go, about 30 minutes.
Okay. All right. So let's say till by my clock 4:50 PM. And if we're not done by then, we'll get back on the, on the line and tell people that we're going to extend it. And we're not anticipating any action coming out of executive session. So with that, we'll go into an executive session. Good afternoon, everybody. This is City Council President Brean Beggs, and we finished our executive session and took no further action. So we are now adjourned for a briefing session. And we'll see you back at 6:00 PM for our legislative session. Take care.